Oh, he's here. He's back. What's the gavel? Are we running? Recording? It's June. There's no thing to hit. Hit the table. The June meeting of the Greenwich Township Board of Adjustments called to order.
Land use board.
Land use board. Old habits die hard. I should say special meeting of the Greenwich Township Land Use Board is called to order.
This is the regular meeting of the Land Use Board of the Township of Greenwich. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, in that a notice was published in the Star-Ledger and Express Times newspaper. Notice was posted on the Municipal Bolton Board of the Township Administration Building in Greenwich Township, New Jersey, and notice was filed with the Township Board.
Uh, Volco?
Paul Beam.
Yeah.
Joseph Tuttela.
Yeah.
Frank Martetta.
Absen.
Ray Buckwalter.
Here.
Bruce Williams.
Here.
Kathy Cullen.
Here.
Don Marie Condes.
Here.
Mark Spudary.
Here.
Gary Hill.
Here.
Joseph Yama.
Here.
Jeremy Blunt.
Absen.
Excuse.
Dale Cunyak.
Absen.
Pam Pasquist.
Okay, everybody please rise for the flag.
I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the good and evil of the human race.
Okay. Uh, who was, who was here last, for the last meeting, the actual, real meeting? Okay, because we need to go over the minutes. It looks like we have five people. So, um, any comments on the minutes or suggestions? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Mark second. All in favor?
Uh, you better have raised a hand, because there's going to be a bunch of extensions.
Um, okay, yeah, raise your hands. All in favor, raise your hands. You need a minute to get that?
Yeah. Everybody here?
No, because we're going to have an extension.
You have eight.
Just break down the extensions. Uh, all opposed? None abstain?
One, two.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, tonight we have, uh, two things on the agenda. First is a public hearing for J E R C Partners. Uh, so we'll start with that, and then we have a, uh, discussion of sewer service, and I think we're going to go into closed session for the first part of that discussion, and then we will come out and continue that discussion. So, is the applicant here and prepared? J Jerk Partner? J E R C? It's spelled with a C. I'll put that on the record. Okay?
Um, I'll tell you what. I don't think it's on, and names are good my side. It's right over here. This might not be right. All right, I'm just recording. He doesn't need to put their profile.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be present for this. My name is John Cipriani. I'm from Sacramento. I'm trying to get off the applicant. J E R C Partners, City of New York. We, um, have made applications, preliminary, uh, by transferable and various applications to the property of the property, uh, number one, four, one, one, four, zero, one, on the F S, uh, uh, this application was submitted on June six, two thousand and four, as opposed to something that's fifty-four, and it's very, very able to happen, but so am I, so it's, um, uh, low on life and company. Uh, part of this application, this specifically requires certain ways of, 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 um, we did, uh, receive, uh, the letter from the, uh, company of the business, I do, for example, this is true. We did respond to that letter, uh, for the completion, so we, unfortunately, I knew you got a kind of, some of your rule of course, or by, we provided that, like, today, um, after speaking with some of your professionals. And the purpose of, I mean, to say, we believe, just, just to review some of the items that were interesting or were missing, and to address them, and, uh, sort of, um, attorney there, I would keep, uh, to, to address any of the questions.
Yeah, so, just a couple of housekeeping things. So, I agree, I think what the first thing the Board should do is address their letter, which was sent out late in the afternoon. I emailed it to everybody, but did you hand, why don't you hand out copies?
Well, I printed it out.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay, so everyone has them. This is the letter dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, which requests a bunch of waivers and gives the reasons.
Well, and just for, there were two June twenty-seventh, twenty-eight.
Yeah, this is replacing the first.
Make sure it's the second letter that everybody has, which is...
My, my letters should be, uh...
Yeah, it looks like that.
Yeah, but the first letter was also...
Yeah, I have one, the same thing.
The first letter that went out...
Okay.
The first letter was three pages long, the second letter, which is, is four pages.
Right. Does everyone have a four-page letter?
No. No. I, I printed it out before I left, so we could copy it.
Can you hand out your copies, please?
My only problem is the printer that I have, it's really yucky, and it only printed seven pages. So, I think you're not having that. No, I'm sorry. I just was running out of time.
I have.
Okay. Oh, you may, I, you have this. Okay, can you have the floor?
I'm good.
Suzanne, just, I emailed this as a PDF late in the afternoon.
Okay.
This one replaces the other letter.
Yeah, but this one didn't come in until one o'clock. So, I...
Yeah, six fifteen, six ten maybe.
It came in at six fifteen, right before I got in my car.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I hear you.
This letter, this is a letter that I believe the Board's desk will, goes through item by item by item. Now, having said that, I want to take care of a couple other housekeeping items. So, the first housekeeping item is that because the Board is not going to hear this application on the merits tonight, the application is going to be continued to the Board's July eleventh meeting. How many Board members are going to be here on July eleventh? Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight? No?
Oh.
Okay, well, we have...
Three people.
Okay, well, Frank Marqueta is now here for tonight. Frank, are you going to be here on July eleven? Frank, are you going to be here on July eleven, at the Board's regular meeting, July eleven?
Uh, um, yes, yes.
Okay, because, so tonight is just going to be going through their completeness waiver request. Can you also give Mr. Marqueta a copy of the letter?
I just did.
Okay. And the, this, the hearing on the application is going to be continued to July eleven. Now, the newspaper notice was perfect, so they're not going to have to re-notice in the newspaper. Their notice to property owners within two hundred feet was probably satisfactory, but it wasn't perfect. And so, since the application has to be continued to July eleventh, in any event, I spoke with the applicant's attorney, they're going to redo the two-hundred-foot notices, which will go out at least ten days before the hearing, just to dot the i's and cross the t's on that. That's the first bit of housekeeping. The second bit of housekeeping is, they made a supplemental ownership disclosure, which was emailed in to Zuvana today. Um, I also emailed that to you. So, just make sure that gets in the file, and that gets distributed to everybody, and those are the only two housekeeping items. So, I, this, in my opinion, this whole completeness waiver thing, it should go item by item, and you should hear from the applicant, and you should hear from Mr. Finelli, and the chairman, so just control how you go.
I got it.
Mr. Chairman, you, you wanted to, to go in same order as...
I think, yeah, what you do is just follow your memo, and we'll just walk through it in order. You can, uh, start, comment on the waivers requested, and then we'll let Mike comment, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely. So, this letter, um, my, my memo actually reflects, uh, Finelli's, um, people's report order, so, um, it's being, uh, completed here. We, we, we do review. The initial completeness review from the Zuvana application was the first one, subject to the, um, the first question, the perspective, second item number four, was, uh, confirmation of receipt of post, the application fees, and the effort of the project. We just submit, we have to, we, uh, we, we just had, uh, we were just trying to finalize the actual, uh, the actual process, and we didn't submit that. But, no, so, so...
Yeah, I gave that to the CFO, but the thing that was missing was the, uh, the W...
Nine.
W nine was missing. That was never submitted.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, yeah. The CFO even made a point to me, that she needs a W nine.
Okay, we will, we will...
Yes, so, hold up. So, what does the checklist say about the W nine? Does it say?
Doesn't say anything.
Okay. So, in my opinion, checklist item four is complete. You're going to put a condition that they submit a W nine tomorrow.
If the rest of these go to the G P, um, checklist item six. Uh, we did, um, so, with this item, there's a certification, like, a package that we paid by property, um, I actually just did tonight, received the certification from the package.
Sign?
Sign.
Do you have it with you?
I, I think it's a, I think it's...
Okay, so...
Before I was writing. So, I can email that to you...
Tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, so again, on checklist item six, upon receipt of that tomorrow, that item will be deemed complete tomorrow.
Checklist item ten. An affidavit of service of me, which provided that, those are hard copies, and, uh, the board's work.
Yeah, in my opinion, this item is now complete.
Checklist item twelve, uh, this is with respect to the photos that have to be provided
on public Zuvana application. Our application is due to be completed.
So, does everyone have these photos as part of the application submission? It looks like there's one, two, three, four, five. So, Mike, because these were submitted, is this item complete?
Well, it's, it's complete, but I don't know if I actually have those photos.
I have.
So, so, the, uh...
You might want more, but if they submitted these five photos, is the item complete?
Yes.
Okay.
The, that checklist item really, actually applies even to sea bearings, for houses and decks and things of that nature. So, yeah, that, they're fine.
Okay.
So, you're satisfied that you have the photos you need?
No, he doesn't have them, but that's an internal problem with the Board. They've submitted them, apparently he doesn't have them.
I went, I, they, didn't make it.
No, I don't have them. So, you can submit your photos to me tomorrow, but the...
Yeah, we'll get another copy of them.
Okay.
Photos, Mr., Mr. Chairman had just provided me with the photos.
Suzanne, you have extra photos in the, in the file or not?
Uh, I should, yeah. I can, yeah.
They're in this packet?
Yeah. They are.
If you can find them in there, you can have them. Okay, let's start with the initial completeness review. Go ahead.
Well, let me ask, I mean, do the Board members have these photos, or were they...
I just...
Yes, they are. They are. They're attached to this letter. They sure are.
Okay.
Mike, they're attached to, uh, Control Point Associate's meets and downs description.
Okay, that Control Point stuff is back at my office, so I suspect they, maybe they are.
You agree with that?
I, I got them. Oh, I thought those were raised pictures.
No, they weren't.
Here.
And he's spitting all his pictures. Can you get that?
Mike, Mike, no, no, I gave him mine.
I've got so many copies of pictures now.
They're not muppets, I swear. Okay.
Do you, you want this?
Let's start with checklist item fifteen.
Thank you.
Uh, so now, I want to make the preliminary, by time application, checklist item number three, um, the Board's signature, the, 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 um, you, you, you request the waiver for this item, the first thing, uh, complete, and you expect to care that it was not being applied, so we will update this for the...
Yeah, you okay with that?
Absolutely. It's not an uncommon little quirk that, that occurs.
When Mike, so, Board members, when Mike makes a reference to date, you don't have to accept it, but unless someone says something, I'm writing down, if he recommended it, and I'm writing it down, waiver to be granted.
Right. What we've done in the past, this is a very common zoning board issue, is we'll walk through all of these, and then anything that anybody has an issue with, we'll come back to and vote on it. So, it's easier just to go through them all first, and then, and then come back to anything where we might have a disagreement. So, Mike, you're okay with that?
Yeah, and, and let me just add this for the Board's information, they're used to seeing my reports and own the format. There's, this section right now that we're going through are waivers that the applicant did not request, which I felt were necessary, or, or, or incomplete items.
Right, they didn't initially request them, this letter now requests them.
Right, because they, they did up, ask for, I think it was six waivers via their initial submission. So, that's the next section of the report, which is usually, it's all tied together into one section. So...
No, we absolutely appreciate the review of our special act, so we're, we're happy with the, 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 um, if we can move, if we're ready to move on, checklist item number twenty-five, uh, the applicant requests a waiver, uh, or this is with respect to the, the business structures and providing, identifying, um, the business structure for property, uh, to, 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 our, 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 actually, we, 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 but we recognize that sometimes we can all get to the, 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 but we are going to, um, the, the form of, uh, of, of, yeah, the, 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 the,[1044.12]
Let's come back to it.
Checklist item number thirty, um, we have a request that this is sixty five, so the project has two applications for the grad line. Uh, we are requesting a way to look at this, but the paper is given. We are still working on the family saying that T D O is our and, um, and the training is a bit of a disruption at the time of the offsite. We don't have, um, we go there.
Mike?
I, I actually agree with the applicant relative to the offsite because the offsite is still being evaluated and analyzed and to try to determine where the pipes might have to come up from and so forth. Okay. However...
So, all of checklist item three refers to offsite?
Checklist item three?
I'm sorry, thirty?
No, that, no, that's what I was just gonna get. There, there are facilities onsite, pump station, their main, that the easement should be shown. Um, so, this is, the, the majority of the system, I think, we could grant a waiver for because, again, it's offsite and there's still debate on where that line is actually gonna be constructed. Uh, but there's, what's shown onsite, there's no reason that they couldn't put an easement around. There, there's pump station and a force main.
So, because, from my understanding, you're just like, like, it's like the water system is not being operated? So, are you looking for public placement or?
Well, this is sanitary, we're talking about water.
Okay. That's not on by, you can tap one, but you can't.
No. All sewer on property is privately owned, but you, you, they want, the contractor want an easement in case there's some sort of blockage, in case there's maintenance and the applicant, the owner, you know, somehow refuses to do it or doesn't do it quick enough, there's gotta be an easement so the municipality can get in there. So, Mike, what you're saying is, you recommend granting a waiver for the offsite easements, but no waiver for the onsite easements, and we'll put a circle around this on when this, this drawing will have to be submitted showing the onsite easements. Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Now, circle, we gotta get back to it with the date.
Checklist item number thirty four, this is with respect to a list of what is to be ready for us to do. Um, at the time, we made the application for, for Lawrence County, Heidi, as a contingency, uh, which was required by our municipality today. Okay, if you also provide a list, let me involve you.
A list would be preferable.
Okay.
Circle it because it'll be, what the...
So, you're gonna provide a list of the other outside agencies that you need approval from, is that?
Right. They're gonna comply with the checklist requirement. The only question is, when?
Uh, for item thirty-eight, we, um, have, this is the request for, 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 and, um, to, um, respond to the action of the, of the, so.
Oh, wait a second. You, okay. You submitted both the application and the escrow as one check?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Both application fees for the data.
Oh, okay, fine. Fine. Okay. Misunderstood.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, so, don't. Item thirty-eight's complete. Correct, Mike?
Yes, thirty, yep, and forty, sorry.
And item forty's complete, as you already just said about.
We went through that before.
Item forty-two.
Uh, this is with respect to information on the existing gradings. Um, and the gradings providing, any gradings that have, and what another figure that's left there, we were not able to, uh, get the, uh, at the time of the, um, oh, I saw that it's, 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 so, we will, um, we will provide a technical, I guess, I guess, we will provide a map.
Okay, so this one gets circled?
Yeah.
Can I just come back to this very quickly? We're circling all these things that need to be...
Submitted.
Submitted pri- this means prior to, okay, just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Prior to the hearing.
Right. We're not waiving it.
It's, it's really...
If it was to be submitted as a condition of preliminary or prior to final, we'd waive it and make it a condition. All these circles are things that have to be submitted before this July eleventh hearing.
I'm just asking as it says testimony, so that sounds like it's gonna happen during the, uh...
Right.
Well, it's even a little different than prior to the hearing, John. It's really, it's gotta be submitted to our office so that we can prepare a technical review.
I understand.
So, we're gonna come back with that. Okay.
We're on the same page.
Right.
When I saw testimony, I thought maybe you were talking about providing the information for, and the...
That's what they were suggesting, but what Mike's suggesting is no, deny the waiver. He wants to see the thing before the hearing.
He can prepare his report.
Correct.
About it. Making sure.
Yep.
Forty-five.
Forty-five, um, I think that there's a continuation with respect to off-track sanitary facilities, we're still trying to understand where all the continuity would be, or whether it has to be, um, local, it's a different, we're not providing that, we're actually going to, um...
Item forty-five says two-foot contours should be provided on the Voorhees property sufficient to facilitate design of the off-track sanitary sewer. That's what item forty-five says.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're told that we can provide this, this probably something that has to be provided at the, from the...
Mike, do you need this to do your report, or is this something that could be made, a condition of preliminary approval, because the details of that would really be for final, right?
I don't know. If you have a, a sanitary sewer, which is obviously an integral component to the project, you would normally have topo, so you can do a profile, kind of gravity versus, they don't force main. So, is it, Mr. Bowler, uh, you shouldn't, you're gonna have to introduce yourself to the board, but, but let me, I'll add since you stood up. Do you have the offsite topo, for, even for the run of pipe through Voorhees that you've shown on the plan?
It's on, for record, Brad Bowler, who's engineering. Um, to answer your question, we do not. Um, what we do have is a town-approved two-way sewer design from the previous application on Voorhees.
Yes.
So, if we can use that as, um, I'm sure the couple has a need like that.
As long as you're in the same datum, that's the, the, which...
Well, we can take it work, you know, it's, from our perspective, the design is needed and approved for construction. The town of Voorhees, man, it doesn't have to do with gravity, we, we would be able to make that work from a sanitary perspective, assuming the previous end here designed appropriately, but I would expect that's a case.
That would be, that's, that's reasonable, that, that makes sense.
All right, so, Mike, you're saying, you're recommending granting this waiver, but subject to the condition that it be a condition of any preliminary site plan approval, correct?
To, to follow up on that, um, nothing here, like, we, for final, we would get new survey and do a full design based on that.
Right, so it's a waiver for completeness only?
And preliminary approval.
And, and just so you know, which I, I don't think you do, we, as the municipal engineers, have two-foot contour interval topo for the whole township. So, you can, we can just send it to you.
Beautiful.
And then, all your problems are solved. Now, I don't know, again, that was, goes back to boy, oh, boy, the nineties. So, I will, the dums again, or maybe so.
Mike, can I make a suggestion? Talk to them offline about that for tonight. You're recommending granting a waiver subject to a condition being imposed as a condition of preliminary site plan approval. And, and if you want to get two-foot topos for Mike, call him tomorrow. Checklist forty-six.
Uh, checklist forty-six, um, required assessment, existing specimen three shown and, we will, our request that this, uh, I agree with, that is, that is ready to be designed, um, prior to preliminary.
Prior, yeah, not as a condition, prior to preliminary site plan approval, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that's a circle.
This is a death item, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's not a circle, though, if it's preliminary site plan approval.
No, prior to preliminary site plan approval.
Yeah.
Right, there's a circle because you got the date, Mike wants, Beth is gonna wanna see this stuff, so she can revise her report.
Okay.
Item forty-seven was a requirement to provide profiles before, and at the time of the application, um, we, at, you want items, and I think our facility is bad, the size of the site, and the number of profiles, and there's, um, not possible to comply with the actual, give me the, the, this, 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 this.
Mike? I don't know. I mean, the applicants said it themselves, uh, the limited number of storm profiles. There's, there's onsite storm drainage, to, to me, storm sewer profiles are part of the development of construction plans. Uh, I, I would think that the applicant should be asked and required to provide same.
We're, we're disagreeing with that.
The question is, when?
What I'm suggesting is that we do have a condition of preliminary approval, and we'll provide for final, which would be a construction, not one that's...
Well, don't you wanna hear what the date of submission is for this, these items? Before you...
With a condition of approval.
No, I know, well, you're saying, so, so it won't be supplied before...
Correct.
The hearing.
Do you need, the question is, do you need that information to do your report?
Yeah, it's kinda what I said, yes. I, I think, and it's not that expensive enough, enough, to be honest with you, it is.
Well, that, that, that was kinda my point, so, there's no crossings for storm pipe other than just running downhill.
Well, it's gonna be more to look for cover and, um, and obviously, when you get down to the outlet and so forth, there's, you have a few crossings to deal with, but it's not, I mean, it's basically one run, big run of pipe.
And that includes on my stormwater plan, correct? Same thing. The invert, the cover inverts side of the pipe are like, there's not that profile, right?
Okay, well, I don't know. I may, call me old school, I'd love to see a profile.
And, and, again, we're not disagreeing, we wouldn't do that before final approval, like you're saying, for, for preliminary approval.
So, Mike, it's your, it's your opinion that you need the profiles in order to prepare your report? I mean, it's really your call as far as...
It's, yeah, uh, yeah, I mean, the, the profile should be supplied. I mean, it's, I think that's, uh, no different than...
Okay, well, board members don't, if board members agreed in that, I didn't get the circle, I don't do. Yep.
Um, this was a requirement to provide information on the topsoil, so to remove the property. Um, at the time we made the application, uh, we will, we will comply the amount of topsoil, but we also wanted to require the part of site, um, because, because of preliminary, um, forms and, and, so, we would request that for completeness, so it would be added on as a mission for, um, expedition, this is just what we, correct?
Do you know, uh, just one question. Do you know at this point in time that, that there will not be topsoil being removed from the site, or you don't, because if, if that's the case, I'm fine with it?
Yes, confirmed.
Okay.
We'll provide it for...
If, if there will be no topsoil exported off the site, and it will be remained and redistributed, I'm fine with them providing information for final.
So, this is waived for...
That's waived for preliminary.
Preliminary.
Subjected to...
And in note, it had to be submitted...
Right.
And that there's no removal of that.
Yeah, and in note, be added to the plan prior to the resubmitted plans, that no topsoil will be removed from the property during construction.
Sixty-seven, uh, this is a requirement to provide, uh, construction details on the proposed sanitary pump station. I mean, it's, the workarrest used to, that this was the offsite preliminary, that the offsite pump station or the on-site? Um, because if it was the offsite, we weren't upstairs, because I had, had the damage emissions because we weren't, frankly, we weren't aware of the, uh, a, a, uh, getting out, so, uh, we're, we're...
No, that, you are a hundred percent right with that statement. There, there, and that's not what I'm asking, it's really for the onsite. So...
If that can be provided?
And, and for that, that design requires the plan for the offsite, if it's designed, so we would request a waiver and provide that for final approval.
Mr. Bowler's correct. Um, there's very, there's none, Mike. Well, there usually would not be this many questions relative to the downstream sanitary conveyance system, but the applicant's, uh, there's the legitimacy to their argument. Therefore, I'm fine with it in this case.
You don't need this for your, for your report, correct?
No, because we don't know what the downstream is.
Yes.
Correct. Normally, yes, but...
So, fifty...
Normally, yes, but not in this case.
But, not in this case.
So, that's fifty-seven.
Yep.
Waived for completeness and preliminary.
Uh, checklist item number sixty-seven, um, we are not, we don't encourage to have any site, but we did not, as part of our, we...
Like, the, the, you can't, you're not requesting a permanent waiver, because this is a waiver for completeness of preliminary. If it, if you change your mind when you come in at final and you want signage, then you're gonna have to provide the details. If you don't want signage at final, you'll ask for another waiver. So, they, they want a waiver for completeness of this preliminary application only.
Mike, okay?
Well, absolutely, if there's no sign, then no problem.
Uh, the checklist item number seventy-four was a requirement that the officials guys have been existing water major hydrants, um, we, we had none on site, so we can provide this part of our application, um, and we request a waiver for that, however we can provide it with, well, I would be...
If, if, we were wrong, we, um, our survey doesn't reflect it, but we have the water mapping from the municipality that shows the size and the locations, and we have the hydrant on our plans.
Where is the hydrant?
Right across the street at the intersection.
And is that shown on your plan?
Yes.
So, it's offset.
It's offsite fifty feet away from the property.
Have you had any con- conversations with fire chief with Joe Mexi, by any chance yet?
That's for the next time, I guess.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's seventy-eight and eighty are close, um, both water, fire, slash fire.
So, seventy-four, I can provide the municipal mapping showing the water lines, and we're pretty sure it'll all be happening.
Okay, let's ask a question. Mike, if they're showing a township-owned hydrant, which is offsite, do they have to show the township piping for it? Or do you, do you just suggest recommending a waiver of that, and on item eighty, whatever the, if the fire chief wants something onsite, then they're gonna have to do what the fire chief wants?
Right. The hydrant's there, it's been there, uh, I don't need to see the mains.
Okay, so, seventy-four, we're ju- we're waiving it for completeness.
Right, so, yes.
You'll, you'll pick up in, uh, item eighty...
Pick up in seventy-eight and eighty.
Right.
This is such a item seventy-four, this is a will serve letter.
Yeah, you will serve letters from everyone except for JCP and L.
Um, you, you request a waiver, that's what we keep, because we had, they agreed to do this, but it's, it's...
On this one, all I can say is it would be, I don't think Mike or Beth need this to prepare the report, but I would not feel too comfortable with the board granting preliminary site plan approval without the will serve letter. So, maybe this one doesn't have to come in before the hearing, but maybe you gotta get this before the board would actually vote to grant approval, assuming that approval's otherwise warranted.
Approval of the preliminary site plan?
Yeah.
So, we waive it for completeness?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Yeah.
Is that any different than, um, the...
Correct, if there's no...
Well, we don't need it before the next meeting, because it's not gonna be part of our professionals' report, but if we need it, so, yeah.
But just know, if you don't...
We're waving it for completeness, so we can start the hearing without this.
If you don't have it on July eleventh, and the board otherwise would be inclined to grant the approval, they're not gonna grant it, so this is something you guys, you guys have to get.
Since the meeting is, is tentatively scheduled for the, the hearing for July eleventh, that this, this will be a July eleventh deadline.
It'll be.
Uh, so, to pick up the trend on item seventy-four, we're gonna, this is a requirement to provide, and so, we're gonna comment on, 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 next, right?
Mexi, yes.
Um, we, um, we are providing, and, and we're providing, um, circles on the site, but, um, we did compile the application, um, in this apartment, because we were willing to have, especially, all of the, I, anticipated that we will need this, the, I, correct, and then all these issues, and we'd like to, um, have this as a waiver of completeness, but perhaps that it can be a, a...
It would be nice...
Do you, do you need this to be done before you prepare your report?
Well, no, but because I'm not gonna have much to comment on, other than we need the chief's, uh, approval.
So, I think it would be in your best interest to have this done by the meeting.
Put it this way, you'd be, you'd be going at your own risk, if you don't have the chief's comments, right, and we're here on July eleven, and the, and the board otherwise votes to grant preliminary site plan approval, and you have the JCP and L letter, then the board's gonna impose a condition that's gonna say, whatever the chief wants, you gotta give him. So, it would be to your benefit to meet with the chief beforehand, if you don't agree with something, try to convince him otherwise, because if you don't, again, on July eleven, if you get an approval, it's gonna say, whatever the chief wants, and then you're gonna lose your ability to basically work with him.
Chairman, I have a question for the first guy.
Yep.
Uh, an agency from, uh, experience, but is it always just the fire chief, or should it be involved in, of either a fire prevention officer, or we have fire marshal, even fire marshal, uh, or official?
I would tell you, in most of my other towns, it's the fire chief and the fire marshal. Here, it's always been the fire chief, but that's, you can ask Mike about that, but he's been here a lot longer than me.
No, historically, it's been, yeah, uh, yeah.
But, all my other municipalities, it's just what you said.
Checklist item eighty, we can waive for completeness, and it'd be in your best interest to have that box checked before the eleventh.
Uh, for checklist item eighty-one, this is a request by breakdown of the number of, this has been provided as part of, and it's not a waiver, but I, I thought it was a, 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 if the board requests...
Right, but, okay, it's a waiver request, because it's supposed to be on the site plan drawing. It's true, you provided it on the architectural drawing. It's technically a waiver, because it's supposed to be in the site plan drawing, so you want the board to grant the waiver for completeness, and you wanna say, make it a condition of preliminary, that you take the same note off the architectural and stick it on the preliminary site plan.
No, they gotta make other plan revisions, that information should be on, that's simple.
Right.
It's gonna take, so, it's not a waiver for completeness, it's something they gotta supply by...
It's a circle.
Yeah, it's a, it's a circle, thank you, that explains it.
Created our own line.
There you go.
Circle, it's not a circle.
It's a circle, and it's an easy circle.
Yep.
Um, so, checklist item number eighty, with drainage area, drainage, the working property, so the, um, information on that, um, the reason why we're not, at the time of the, we, and we continue to, with our neighbor, um, the, the, right, the, the, to find a resolve, the, the current, um, to both, we don't, uh, the, 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 prior to the preliminary, uh, site plan, or the hearing, or, or, we need to pass, and, and a waiver, we got...
Mike, do you need that to do your report?
Well, yeah, the app, I mean, the applicant previously agreed, and I forget what checklist item it is.
Item forty-two.
Item forty-two, that they're gonna supply it, so, I mean...
It's kinda related to that.
Yeah, I, I would think it's no dip, forty, yeah, forty-two was a circle. There should be a circle too. I mean, just, all we're looking for is a drainage area.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, we have a proposal...
Eighty-six, a drainage area to ditch, that's all.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's fine, I think, it would be where we, uh, find a ditch.
Ask Mike, don't ask the engineer.
Yeah, it's, uh, Mr. Bowler knows exactly what I'm talking about, I think, except...
Mr. Bowler, is that?
Yes.
You agree?
So, that's circle.
It's a circle, Mr. Bowler.
Eighty-six is a circle.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving down to, um, another section of waiver request.
Right, these are the waiver requests that, that, that you already made, and these are the two, so there were six that you made. Mike recommended in his June twenty-fifth letter that four of them be granted, and two of them, he said, shouldn't be granted, so you're now requesting, explaining to the board why you want the two that you requested, and he recommended not be granted, why the board should grant them tonight.
Uh, so, the, only checklist item forty-one, which is under the, checklist item forty-four, everybody's...
Right.
So, on the thirty-one, um, was the question of the plan and profile of Voorhees Road, but it's five hundred feet, um, at the time of the application, we were requesting a waiver of this, um, and I think it's questioning based on our competition with the professionals, um, but we can provide a plan and profile of Voorhees Road, um, however, I think the site triangles were, I'm not sure, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, can we stand up there again?
Yes, sir, ma'am. The current, uh, Voorhees Road, we did discuss a waiver for the requirement for five hundred feet each direction, but we would agree to do the site triangles, uh, if you look at the current, split, they're really fairly consistent with that mail, so, by inspection, it's compliant, uh, but we can provide the profiles, uh, prior to final.
I couldn't agree more with Mr. Bowler, that by inspection, it is compliant, so by virtue of that, it would be nice to have them, they are giving us the site triangles, I would be fine with that.
So, this is a partial, Mike, this is a partial waiver, a...
It's a, yes, it's not a circle, they don't need to supply it, they need to supply it prior to final, uh, and it's, I know for a fact it's gonna comply, so there's no issue.
So, it's waived for completion?
Waived for completeness for preliminary, yes, but it needs to be supplied for final.
And really, the, if, the, the open issue here is the site triangles.
Well, yeah, but they're, they've agreed to supply the site triangles, so they're, we're okay.
Okay.
Well, this is two, that's two different things.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm confused, though, because these are things that they requested that you didn't agree to, but now you're agreeing to them, so what's changed?
He's changed his mind, and Mike, the site triangles that are compliant by inspection...
No, 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 site triangles can't be compliant by inspection, site distance...
Is it a circle?
No, there's, there's, there's site triangles, I believe, shown on it, aren't, site triangles are already shown on the plan, aren't they?
What I'm understanding is that...
So, um, so the, it's, 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 it's one hearing wise, site triangles are one of the biggest concerns that people have to drive a, so, you might notice, there's cars going up and down the road, right? We showed the site triangle on our plans, um, and if you look at our grading plan and the grade of the road, it's a straight hill to have, so you see one way or the other. If you look at our plan, it shows that, now, is there a profile that, of that view, if there's not a profile, we will provide that for final, but from my perspective, we look at that and, and understand it's clear for visibility perspective, so, prior to that, we, we make sure that that was clear.
So, Mike, what, what I'm understanding you're saying is that based on the topography and the common sense, looking at this straight piece of road that doesn't have any major issues, that you can prepare your report without having the actual site triangles, but they would still have to be obviously provided for the site?
There's, there's obvi- no, uh, there's, there's confusion, I think, between site triangles and site distance. The bottom line is, let's, we can get through this. They, they've shown site triangles, that's satisfactory, they haven't shown site distance profiles, but we know by inspection it will be okay. So, therefore, if we were gonna waive the site distance, uh, requirement for preliminary, it will need to be supplied for final, and what they should have done so far, they do show site triangles which accommodate the, uh, the item by inspection, if you will.
Okay, I, I just, I was changing site profiles and triangles, but I think...
It's, it's very common, uh...
By inspection, you're okay with it, you don't need it for your report.
It's almost semantics, but it's not.
So, then it's waived for completeness?
Yes.
Sorry, next.
Well, hopefully, our final one is checklist item number 80. And this is a requirement to provide cross-sections with the water sources. Our, as of right now, the state does not have any water source out there, but we did sort of mention that we are going to be relocating a drainage, a drainage-
Ditch.
Yeah, drainage ditch, along with property, so I think we are going, it might be semantics of grand, but you know, already we're definitely with the ECP regulations, and we're going to take not, not the main water source, but so, but we will provide a different surprise of, of-
I'd ask the board to that, the design of the swell, I'd be working with the neighbor through what you'd like to see to make sure he's happy with our relocation, that might adjust the profile, so I'd ask the board if we waive that for preliminary approval, please provide the final from the facts forecast. I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, I just, the design changes in that swell a little bit, I want to make sure it's filed before I profile it.
Yeah, and to-
Take time.
I'm not speaking for the board, but to me, though, the crux is whether, Mike, our professional needs that in order to prepare his report, or whether he's comfortable. So, sorry to put you on the spot again, though.
That's quite all right, that's enough of me on the spot, this is what we do. Part of his job. The, this is an interesting one, to be honest with you, probably the most interesting of all these items, because there is, this ditch, the existing ditch, there is a very defined existing ditch out in the field, which really, a checklist item would be applicable to that. However, that ditch is going to be-
Obliterated and obliterated.
Obliterated, thank you, I figured, nice word, and relocated and redesigned. So, what is the purpose of doing a profile and cross-sections of a ditch that's going to be obliterated?
So, what checklist item refers to existing water sources?
Right. Yeah, so I take no exception to the applicant not being required and a waiver being granted for the existing ditch. What's the purpose? The, there should be obviously a profile for the proposed ditch, because that's a very integral part of the design.
Which they don't have yet either.
And, but Mr. Bowler's comments and justification are sound, because he is working with the adjacent property owner who has the easement rights for this ditch, so, for preliminary, we're going to work with what we got now, and-
Did we cover that in one of the other checklist items, the drainage?
No, really, because that was-
The calculation of the drainage areas-
Yeah, it's all drainage area stuff.
The location of the ditch.
This is actually the ditch.
So legally or not, Mike has taught me a couple things about this issue over the last two days, which I didn't want to know about.
Wow, God, that's the nicest thing you ever said to me.
So Mike, when do you need, do you, or when do you need information on-
I would say, if Mr. Bowler's still working out, are you still working this out, Mr. Slack? You are? Okay, that's a little problem. Okay, so the, so the design is on the plan right now, for the relocated swell, has not been approved by Mr. Slack, as we sit here tonight.
That's right.
Well, to be honest with you, that, what can we ask the applicant? It's going to have to, that would be a condition of any approval.
Condition of preliminary, final or preliminary.
It's got to be a condition of preliminary prior to final, because Mr. Slack obviously has to agree to the relocated swell, ditch, I should say. So that, this one's a little different, because there's a third party involved here.
Mike, can I speak for you, please? You're recommending the waiver be granted, but to be a condition, saying they have to produce it as a condition of preliminary approval, because if they do that, then you know that the board will have it before final, correct?
Well said, Mr. Drew.
So what's the deadline, that we have to have it before?
Or the condition of-
No, it's a condition of preliminary, should they receive an approval, right, it's after the final.
Okay.
All right. So going back to checklist item, we have, I have item 25, 30, 34, 42, 46, 47, 81, 81, and 86.
Those are the items where the waiver requests would be technically denied, well, either denied tonight, give them a date, once they submit them, Mike aims it complete, or you grant a waiver tonight, but say they have to be submitted by such and such a date in order for the hearing to go ahead. Your choice on how you do it, but also your choice on what the date is. So, when you need it, Mike?
Well, here's what I'll throw out, as I think, as a fair of the offers we can make, we have two weeks to the next meeting. We split the difference. We give the applicant a week, so basically by next Thursday, even Friday, you get the information to Beth and I and the board, and then, oh, boy, here's a nut.
Thursday's the 4th of July, Friday's July 6th.
Could I offer a couple of options to the board to consider?
Please.
Definitely, you could do one.
Yes, 42, please, right.
42 is the drainage ditch information.
Right, so today's this area-
So 25, part of 30, 34, 42.
And, well, and 86, I can provide by Wednesday, next week.
Wednesday, July 2.
Yes, and I prefer-
July 3.
July 3, sorry.
Prefer, I can email it, or-
Yeah, you can email it.
Yeah, sorry.
I can always overnight this analysis, and it'll be here on the 5th, if you're open.
Again, it's more important that this stuff gets to Mike, so he can do his report.
Okay.
25, 30, 34, 42, 86. By the way, I normally don't do resolutions for completeness waivers, I am going to do a resolution for these completeness waivers, with all the conditions and all that, so, and I'm going to send it out in draft, obviously, the board doesn't meet until July 11 to adopt the resolution, but this way, everyone, Mike will have it, it'll be in the board file, the applicant will have it, and you'll see in writing what the board did, so no one can fight about, no, I didn't remember it that way, blah, 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 blah. I'll send it to you, if you disagree with what I wrote, you'll tell me.
And then 46 and 47, I may need till the ninth, and I know that's not a lot of time, but-
And 81?
81, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. All right, 81 we can do as part of the mission, I think.
Okay.
I didn't hook up on that one, sorry.
So you're saying 46-
And 47.
And 46 is the trees, and 47 is the, um-
I may be able to get our landscape architect out there earlier, but I don't-
No, can't be that many specimen trees, other than the ditch.
I don't think there is, but I got to make sure, schedule-wise, there's a couple of additions coming up in, we're battling right now.
But I'm, I'm not, okay, 46 is the trees, I get it, 47 is the proposed-
Profiles.
Profiles for the sewer pipes.
Yes.
Okay, so you're saying-
46 and 5, I know it's not, I mean, it's generally pretty easy, but it takes time, it's not like a quick thing, unfortunately.
Okay, so you're, Mike, he's asking if it's okay with you to get-
What are the dates on those? I'm sorry, I'm not-
Wednesday, July 3 for 25?
Well, we have all that, I'm sorry, talking about the two that were outstanding.
July 9.
If I can get it earlier than that, I would certainly do that.
July 9, meeting on July 11, Tuesday.
One of those is going to be a Beth item, I can't really, I mean, the other one, the sewer thing is going to be yours.
How about, how about we do the 8th, which is Monday? I mean, right, and it's a day, does it really matter?
I could try, I mean, 47, I get it, I'll reiterate it on our plans already, it's just not in profile version, so it's, the information's there, so if Mike starts reviewing our plans, we'll get the match exactly.
Yeah, I can certainly get started without the profile, so I'll just-
And 46, I mean, again, I'm trying to do-
But just so you understand, some board members are going to be very, very concerned and interested in 46, because in general, I can tell you from my experience representing them since 2008, that they're into landscaping and buffering.
Don't disagree. I, that one is a, of people are, do that.
I understand.
We do engineering, where we have a lot of people off.
Right, but-
I'm not going to, I mean, I guess I'm going to speak to Beth, she's not here, she was ill, not able, and that's our planner, I think that trees would be her family, but since it's only one item, that's probably-
Yeah, I might be okay to get it done much earlier than that, I just don't want to commit right now, really, because I'm on a, you know.
Yeah, can you do it on the 8th?
The trees, yes. I'll just come on the trees in the profile, once it's, it won't have been three, no.
July 9, not July 9.
For the tree, yes.
Okay, for the tree, for 46, but for the sewer profile, if you want, July 9.
You're my best, it's tough with the holiday.
Mike, you're the one who's going to have to review the sewer profiles, you mind getting them on the 9th? Listen, you don't have to have it in your report, you're going to do your report based on everything you get on July 3, and then you'll come to the meeting to discuss the sewer profile for the ten issue.
Yep, fine, under that circumstance.
Want me to craft the motion now? Did we cover them all?
Yes. Yeah, we covered them all, and just as a general question to board members, sometimes we could go through these one by one and ask for board input, but most of the time, these waivers are for issues that are pretty technical and mostly handled by our professionals. So unless there's any board members that have any questions about any of these waivers or anything we've discussed, then I would ask John to go ahead and craft the motion, and we will vote.
So the only thing that I need to know is, the board members want to deny waivers on these items and say they have to be submitted by such and such a date, and if they are, Mike will then deem them complete? Or do you want to grant the waivers, subject to the condition that they be submitted by those dates, and if they're not, the hearing doesn't start?
Yeah, I would say grant the waivers on the condition that the information's supplied to Mike's satisfaction, and Mike has the, Mike and Beth have the authority to deem it complete once they have all the information, which is part of our normal rules anyway.
Okay, so, anyone have any questions before I craft the motion?
I'm concerned that there's some third party constraints here. I don't understand the plan, I've been trying to look around that, but it's possible that this issue can control any of them.
As an example, what it, for example, the-
The Joe Mexi stuff, the fire chief, okay.
Quite frankly, there are two constraints here that could stop their project, but it wouldn't stop the board from processing the application. The two constraints are if the property owner doesn't agree to move the ditch. So your approval is going to be subject to a condition that that ditch be moved, and that, that's going to be their problem. That's out of your control, so you don't worry about that. That's why you didn't require that to be submitted, because since it's out of your control, nothing you can do about it. The other one is a sewer issue, on whether or not they can actually hook their sewer line at the very end into the sewer line on Dowell's property. That's out of the board's control, you don't worry about that. The issue for preliminary approval is, is sewer feasible? Based on what Mike has said and what he's looking for, sewer's feasible, whether they actually get their permission or not, there's a part of the affordable housing agreement between the township and this applicant, contemplates if Dowell doesn't voluntarily let them do that, then there's going to be litigation filed on that. But again, that should not stop the board from processing the application. That's something that could stop the project, but should have nothing to do with, in my opinion, what you do on preliminary. Now, for final, they need details of that stuff, that might be a separate issue, but this is not final. The municipal land use law says that the plans for preliminary approval only have to be in quote tentative form, that's what the municipal land use law says. For final, you need all the details, and that's why they're only applying for preliminary.
Did that answer your question? Did it over-answer your question?
Oh, boy.
Thank you very much, I owe you. So the motion would be to grant the following waivers of checklist items, item 15, and these are, I'm first going to go through the ones that are granted, subject to a condition of preliminary approval. So that's item 15, item 45, item 55, item 57, item 67, item 78, but that one is going to have to be submitted prior to the board actually voting to approve a preliminary site plan application, item 80, item 31, item 85, and then let me check Mike's original-
Was item 74 satisfied?
No, item 74 also, I didn't mention, item 74 also. And then four of the items in Mike's original report, which is item 7, item 44, item 50, and item 64. Those would be waivers granted, they'd be conditions of preliminary approval. Now, there are a bunch of items that are now complete.
I can't remember if I considered, I thought it was like 30, and half of it-
Half of it, right. Half of it's, half of it's complete. I haven't, I just read the conditions, I haven't, I haven't mentioned item 25 or 30 on purpose. I just mentioned the items where completeness waivers have been granted, and the information has to be supplied as a condition of preliminary approval. I have two other sets of conditions to read through. I have a set of conditions where you don't need a waiver anymore, because they're complete, and I have a set of, you're granting waivers, but these things have to be submitted by either July 3, July 8, or July 9. So what are you, what are you saying?
On 30, there were two aspects.
Right, you're going to grant a waiver for off-site easements.
Off-site easements.
Right.
And then there was, and that, that's all the other stuff, the one that you waived because that happened.
Okay, so I'll say 30A and 30B.
So the off-site is-
It's 30A, it's going to be-
Is waived for completion?
Right, subject to, she's putting on this list, subject to a condition of preliminary approval.
And then B, which is the onsite, is due on-
30B is due on July 3, so let me go, I'll go through the list of granting completeness waivers, items 25, 30B, 34, 42, 81, and 86, but that stuff all has to be submitted by July 3. A waiver for item 46, that's the trees, that's got to be submitted by July 8. A waiver for item 47, that has to be submitted by July 9. And then the following items have been deemed complete tonight, you don't need a waiver anymore, and that's item 4. Now, item 6 is this, the signed certification from tax collector, they have an unsigned one in the package, they said you're going to submit it tomorrow, so, hm? Yeah, we'll add that, we'll add item 6 onto our circle list, and just so it's not sort of complicated, we'll give it to July 3, but if it gets submitted tomorrow, it would be appreciated. And then let me see if there's any other items that are complete. Yes, item 38 and item 34, I mean, item 38 and item 40, those are complete. So the motion would be to grant the waivers, subject to what I just said.
I'll make that motion.
They need a W-9, it's not a completeness item.
Yeah, it's not on the checklist. Let's do a roll call.
Paul Bean.
Yes.
Joseph Chitella.
Yes.
Frank Marteta.
Yes.
Ray Buckwalter.
Yes.
Bruce Williams.
Yes.
Kathy Coleman.
Yes.
Don Marie Condes.
Yes.
Mark Scudary.
Yes.
Gary Hill.
Yes.
Joseph Yama.
Cards.
Okay.
So, we have a pretty stringent timeline for this project, and it's, um, it's interesting to say the least, that we start this meeting tonight, we have a special meeting with a bunch of volunteers here, and we're going through these checklist waivers. I'm hoping that the applicant understands that we really need these completed and ready to go on July 11th, so that we can complete this project to stay on task. A lot of, a lot of waivers, and at the end of the day, I'm hoping that we can move this project forward on the 11th and maintain our timeline. Paul?
I don't know if we should write what was up before right now, but in all of their studies here, the last, I don't know if it needed to be provided or not, there was the financial impact to the community, and there was a study about how many children would be provided at the complex, would be, that's not in any of this paperwork, is that needed?
Unless it's a part of the environment, the EIS and the ordinance.
No, 'cause I mean, with the, with the one on Dumont, it was all provided.
Well, someone asked that question, it was answered. You asked the question during the public hearing, and they were very well prepared, and they had it with them.
Okay. Well, actually, no, it was in, it was a nice folder and everything too, but it was provided.
They submitted a, they submitted a specific supplemental report.
Okay.
So, put it, you might, in light of that question from the board member, not a checklist requirement, but you, you'd do very well to submit something like that, or have it with you.
I certainly understand the question, we understand the meaning, but you have to remind me about that. If anything will be prepared, it's very useful, we recommend.
And just so you know, there's something on the township's website. The township's website, under the affordable housing doc tab, if you click on that, you will see there is a school study of how many schoolchildren were gonna be generated by both of the sites. So, you probably will actually find the information, and if you cite the township website and that information, no one's gonna question your source, because the governing body relied on that, and then you can extrapolate to how much is gonna be on your site.
The only reason I bring that up, though, is because the other report that Ingram gave us, the student number was actually larger than what our town reported after that. So, I was just kinda curious if that same number was being anticipated here. But if they're gonna use our report, then the numbers gonna stay.
Well, why don't you, listen, now the board member is saying he'd like you to check the township number. And remember, you also, the newspaper notice is good, so the hearing has been opened tonight. I checked the newspaper publication, and it's perfect. I mean, as the board secretary, you checked the certified cards, and they were correct. So, the only issue is the content of the notice that went to the 200 footers, just to dot the i's and cross the t's, I'm not saying it was deficient, don't get me wrong, but you're gonna do that again at least 10 days before July 11, which means that has to be mailed by July 1, correct? And you're gonna use the exact form you used in the newspaper for the 200 foot form, correct? Okay.
Um, the next thing on our agenda, and we're going to, going to close session to discuss some issues for sewer service. You wanna read your resolution?
Yeah.
You wrote it.
Yep. So, this is what I'm, I'm suggesting to the board, that the board go into closed session, and I'm gonna read the proposed resolution, whereas NJSA 10:4X2, the Open Public Meeting Act, authorizes this board to exclude the public from that portion of a meeting at which this board discusses certain matters. Whereas the board is about to discuss such a matter, where confidentiality is required for the attorney to exercise his ethical duties as a lawyer, namely, attorney-client privileged legal advice regarding sewer rigs and the pending affordable housing litigation titled "Inray Greenwich Township Compliance With Mount Laurel Third Round Housing Obligations", document number WRNL 228-15. Whereas this board believes the public should be excluded from those discussions, now therefore be it resolved by the Greenwich Township Land Use Board. On June 27, 2019, that the board now go into closed session, the public be excluded, and the board believes a discussion conducted in the closed session may not be disclosed to the public, because all discussions will involve attorney-client privilege, advice, and information. This closed session should not take more than 30 minutes. And then the board's gonna come out of closed session into open session and discuss the sewer service area in public, but the closed session will be about 30 minutes. Someone wanna make the motion to do about that resolution?
I'm gonna go to closed session.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
To the record, who made the motion?
Bruce.
Bruce made the motion. Gary seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Paul, can you handle the, the, we, we're on. So, I need a motion from a board member to recommend that the Furman property, which is the site of the perpetuity project, be added to the sewer service area should we discover that it's not already part of the sewer service area. John made the motion. Mark seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Secretary will do a, a letter on that. I can review it if you want, but that letter should go to the township clerk.
Does anybody have any other business?
I would just recommend that everybody take a look at that email I sent out at the end of the day today. And, any questions? Lemuel?
Yeah, so the other thing, we were thinking, we're gonna put something on the calendar for July in case the meeting on the 11th doesn't bear fruit.
Yeah, and it's the third?
Well, professional wise, Beth's not here, but first of all, Mike and John, when are you?
I'm out, I know one of the last weeks of July.
The 25th would be right, two weeks later.
I'm out that week, July 22nd through to 26th, and back, the following, whatever.
Mike, is there anyone else in your office, if they had to, that could cover for you?
Yeah, sure.
I think we're gonna stick with our, with the fourth Thursday.
Yeah. When I was talking to those fellows, being Pete Pulte and Brad Bowler, before the meeting started, talking about their schedule and whatnot.
This is an open session, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. He made a point to say that they're, they're not concerned about the timing to secure the township approval, that their submission of information isn't gonna be submitted to wherever it goes until the end of August. So, this...
Just so you understand, listen. In the last round of funding from HMFF, they would accept the board attorney's letter stating that the board had approved an application, and we didn't have to do the resolution until after the submission date. I've been told that for this round of funding, they're requiring an adopted resolution. So, I do not want to have the board approve something in August, and then we're gonna have to have a special meeting, and I'm gonna have to do this massive resolution, like within one week or something, and have a, you know, a fire drill to get the thing done.
You might wanna talk to them, John, only because, he, just because, talk.
What are they, what are they gonna say?
There it is.
Yeah, they know somebody.
I'm just telling you what I was told.
All right. So, I'm gonna propose that we put a tentative meeting on the, on the calendar for July 25th at 7:30 here in the township building. I'm hoping we won't need to have that meeting, but if we don't accomplish our task from the 11th...
And the good news is that our secretary won't have to do the Oprah notice until after July 11. You're not gonna do it right away, you're gonna wait on July 12. If we need the meeting, then you'll do the Oprah notice.
Okay.
Oprah?
Open public, Oprah notice, the Open Public Meeting Act, Oprah.
Oh, okay. I was thinking, I'm thinking Oprah, all right.
Okay, because the, we need, two notices have to go out. There's an Open Public Meetings Act notice that has to be, uh, 48 hours before a meeting, that's our responsibility. The MLUL notice is the applicant's responsibility. So, if we have that meeting, our board secretary's gotta do this Open Public Meeting Act.
They're saying that it's 48 hours before the meeting?
Correct, but there's some cases saying it's gotta be published.
Oh, so in order to get it published, you need to have, yeah, okay, yeah, 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 gotcha. All right. Is there anyone who absolutely can't, that knows they can't be here on the 25th?
Yeah, me, but I said that. I said that already.
Yeah. So, as we move forward, if you know you're not gonna be available, just keep Suzanne informed, because we have to make sure we have the forum for that meeting. If we, we might not need it, so on the 11th, we can try to do a final head count, but... On the 11th? Okay. You're fired.
And again, if you don't wanna meet for that second meeting in July, your option on July 11 is just run the meeting.
So, you're telling us, don't give them a hall pass, do our due diligence, but make sure they pass.
But run, no, run your meeting late. Run your meeting later than you'd normally run it.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. All right, so, let me...
Pardon?
You agreeing to that?
Are you ready for this? If you have to, if this meeting on July 11 has to go to, let's say, 12:00 midnight? Is there a place open at 12:00 midnight for the pizza?
We'll find a place, John, for you.
Find a place, Dylan.
We'll take cash. We'll take cash and a little pizza. Now, we can't say that, we're recording.
That was a joke, wasn't it?
It was a joke. Okay, uh, if there's no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you all.